Call order, more session of planning question. First agenda item is discussion of the annual agenda, discussion Northwest Superior Plan Project. Steve's doing it.
Yeah, I'll just kind of tee it up, I guess. You know, you guys got the materials on Friday, so you know, Darcy's here to kind of walk us through it and answer any questions that we have. You guys might have. I have a few comments. I wasn't in the office last week, so I wasn't able to provide comments to them last week. But this is just kind of an opportunity for final direction and clarification as to, they've obviously done a lot of work. This is pretty thorough. So, I don't think the intent was really for us to go through every slide, but if, you know, so where we need further direction, Darcy's here to receive that and kind of clarify anything. Otherwise, you know, if you guys have any ideas on how you want to handle it, but I don't think Darcy's plan was to kind of walk through every single slide. We can kind of skim through the big picture stuff and then provide direction if that's how you want to do it, or if you had a different idea, she's open to that as well.
Yeah, I've got some comments.
Okay.
No, I just think it's very, very well done.
Okay.
Yeah.
As a starting place.
So, I think maybe one suggestion would be we, there's kind of some distinct sections in here and we can kind of just, you know, see if anybody's got feedback on the initial pieces. This really was a chance for you guys to give us input. As you know, we've got the community meetings next week, so this is kind of draft of that material and, you know, we're here to listen and refine this for next week. So, I think maybe what I'll do, I'm flipping on my computer. It's not on my computer. So, just in terms of the overall agenda for those meetings, I think what we've tried to do is provide enough context to kind of inform the conversation based on the meetings we had last fall, but not repeat all of that information. So, we're assuming there's going to be, you know, a fair amount of folks who were involved in those prior meetings. We'll ask some questions about that, but probably spend, you know, five minutes just kind of giving some context about the process and we can kind of flip through those. Matt Prosser with Economic and Planning Systems will be available to kind of talk about the market analysis that they're doing and kind of give some context on that. So, we'll spend a little bit of time there. A little bit more time as we get into kind of the follow-up material that we've produced since we were here last fall on the guiding principles and then the scenarios. But I think in each of those cases, when we get into the guiding principles and then the scenarios, key choices, we'll present some information, have a fair amount of time for discussion on those. So, I would say, you know, we've got an hour and a half for those meetings and our intent is to, you know, try to spend at least the last hour of that time on those scenario sections. We'll have a lot of time to talk about, you know, kind of what people are responding to, questions, all of that stuff. So...
And that was, a couple of my questions throughout was just, you know, how much discussion time will there be versus, you know, clicker and answering questions? So, you think there'll be, it didn't look like there were a whole lot of questions or just a couple of few questions.
Yeah, we have, we do have some targeted questions built in, but I think our goal was, and maybe what we can do is kind of, I'll give you a quick rundown on kind of where those discussion points might be and then we can circle back and talk about some of the specific comments that you might have. So, process piece, you know, you guys are all familiar with this. Just a little bit of context, talk about, you know, timing, where are we going from here? So, that's a quick overview. Quick warm-up questions. And then, as again, Matt will talk about the market assessment and I think we, you know, we've got, this is still pretty high level, but I think pretty informative information to kind of give us some context for the marketplace discussion in particular in terms of their preliminary findings about some of the national trends, what's happening in the trade area.
And I did have some questions in this here. It's like in the trade area growth, Superior and adjacent neighborhoods are growing. Let's see, Superior and adjacent neighborhoods are growing, Superior Town Center, City Experience, less housing growth since 2010. And this, this isn't really accounting for what's going on in downtown Superior. This is only up through 2010. Okay, so, will our numbers be including what's anticipated going into downtown Superior?
Yes. So, they are looking at that as well. And so, we do have through 2017 on, I'll ask Matt, Matt to clarify that, but you know, that is part of what they're looking at is kind of what's happening there and, you know, what's planned already. So...
Okay. I mean, that would be good to have in there. And in the second half, let's see, retail demand from communities in the US 36th corridor has shifted towards Boulder and the I-25 corridor. Will you talk to that a bit as to why we're seeing that and what, I mean, is there an explanation for it? And do you, I mean, do we know why that's happening?
So, I think Matt will speak to that. We haven't talked about that in great detail, but I think in general, you know, I think the I-25 corridor has just, there's been so much growth along that corridor, particularly to the north Highway 7 area. You know, Thornton's got a lot of activity there. So, Matt can speak to the details of that, but I think it is something that we've, you know, we have seen is kind of that shift a little bit. So...
Okay. Those are all my questions for that slide.
Okay.
Well, I say that, actually, the corridor being overbuilt in terms of retail, and not that I disagree, I mean, there's a lot of retail going on. I mean, can, will you be able to talk to some, talk to that a bit as to, you know, I mean, does that mean we really shouldn't be looking at retail, or do we need that residential to put in retail? Is, I mean, if everything's shifting towards I-25 and back towards Boulder?
I think it helps frame up the context in terms of, you know, being realistic about how much new retail to expect and, you know, how to balance that with other uses. And that's really, as we talked about, the marketplace opportunity concepts, that was really kind of looking at, you know, what other uses might be appropriate. So, there'll be a lot more detail on each of those issues. And Matt can certainly speak to that in a lot more detail for the market analysis. But I think, you know, it's not so much that you shouldn't be looking at retail, but how do you kind of strengthen what you have and kind of put that into context. And, you know, I think regardless of whether it's 36th corridor or anywhere else in the metro area, I think the message has been pretty consistent from the economic folks that it's a different animal in terms of retail and, you know, we need to be looking at things differently and planning accordingly. So, it's, it's just changing and I think we're trying to be responsive to that.
And do we have thoughts on the Flatiron Marketplace? I know that borders our town. I assume we're looking at that and have some sense of what might be happening there?
Um, I don't know the specifics of that, but that, again, that's something that Matt will be able to talk to specifically, so I can ask him to go into a little bit more detail on that.
I know there's some residential being built and apartments and things that are going in that we probably ought to be aware of. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and then I think they kind of go into a little bit of detail in terms of the trends here in Superior and the county, rental rates, growth in retail, those types of information. Oops. And then talk about the marketplace specifically in terms of some of what we're seeing. And a lot of this is really, you know, kind of confirming, I think, what people were anecdotally observing in the conversations last fall. So, it's just putting, putting numbers to those observations that we've heard during our multiple conversations. Other questions or things on the market context that you guys would like EPS to really focus on in those, in that presentation, or you want to know more about right offhand?
What have they said in terms of I-25? I mean, what I'm reading is that Welland County is the fastest growing county and right now the biggest, quickest areas up around Greeley and they're working on expansion, expanding the university. In other words, how far up I-25 does it go and why? I mean, I know Erie in terms of being next to it, so that's logical to me.
Yeah, no, the Loveland US 34, I mean, that's pretty far out of your, your trade area, but based on other work we've been doing with EPS, US 34 is another big hub where that's pulling retail away from Fort Collins and other, other cities that have historically had more of that in the city. So, it's, it's changing, the dynamics are changing pretty substantially within the whole front range. So...
I know we're kind, I mean, we're probably going to have guided the conversation, which I can tell from the rest of the presentation, towards changes to the marketplace to make it more successful. I mean, and is it in general that we're building more localized, just trying to build a residential in areas in order to, and then, I guess, help support these areas, right? Is that, does that tend to be the trend? Because we're not getting the regional draw. I mean, we have a regional draw with, you know, with Costco, of course, that's our primary one, Whole Foods and Target somewhat. But beyond that, we're not really drawing people into our town for much else. Sports stable, of course, is doing some things. So, is the thinking just in general that bring in residential to support these areas?
Well, I think it's, it's a little bit more nuanced than that. I think the concepts, and we can shift to that in a moment, but I think maybe as we get into the guiding principles, I think part of the message is that, you know, the marketplace is pretty crucial to the health of the town. And so, the concepts that we'll be presenting are really focused on how to help support the strongest retail components that you have currently and try to complement that and complement what's happening in downtown Superior. So, it's really kind of look, trying to look at that big picture in terms of, you know, how do we make it all work better together and protect that asset that you have currently? So, I think as Chaney got into some of the concepts, you'll see, you know, it was how do we break this down and kind of have the least impact on the biggest generators, you know, kind of, kind of working with some of those opportunities you have for the underperforming areas potentially and some of the surface parking. So, that's kind of where some of those concepts went. But I think, you know, at the high level, when we, when we really step back and thought about Northwest Superior as a whole and really the town as a whole, you know, really seeing that as an asset that needs to be protected, it's really important to the town. So, how do we support that?
Before we leave this, this slide, I think that, because this is kind of the introduction to the overall Northwest Superior plan, I do feel like this one needs another bullet that kind of talks more about original town and our need to address, like, development pressure or, you know, the growth that we're seeing within the residential area and original town too.
Yeah, and I think...
And I think that four kind of gets there, but it...
You want to break it out?
Well, I mean, I think that you could look at it and see all those, especially when you transition right into the marketplace as it being, I mean, all of those also, you know, directly affect or could be related to the marketplace.
I didn't catch where. I did when I was reading through it. It's like, where's original town? And eventually, I mean, there's plenty in there on it, but it doesn't get, we don't get to it till later, for sure.
Right, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, would you all agree then, having a separate guiding principle specific to, we were trying to step back and really think about the, the big picture here and that's why we kind of combined that with four, but I think it's a good point, Stephen, that we could call that out separately if you guys think that makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's enough specifics with original town that it's probably worth, because that's just the one area in town that's just under our general land use code and policies which we're looking and trying to address. So...
You could either just add on to bullet four, including, you know, something about original town, or you could add a whole separate one.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at that. So, what we were trying to do with the guiding principles is really try to provide a little bit of a foundation for the concepts that we were exploring. So, these all really built from the conversations we had with the community last fall, as well as that supplemental analysis in terms of the market context and some of the zoning analysis that we've done and additional work. So, you know, I think what we've tried to shift away from a little bit in this upfront is, is, you know, kind of talking about all of the individual components. We still need to do that, but this is, this is a way to kind of hang everything together, if you will. So, we go into a little bit of detail for each of the principles in terms of, you know, some of the context, you know, why are we, why is this important? Where are we today? And then, and focus on kind of some of the ideas that came out of those conversations in terms of what people would like to see in the future. And that's really kind of our, you know, basis for future goals as we go forward. Does that general approach make sense to everybody?
Yeah, the only, the only, I mean, the only comments I had on these next couple of slides was, the next four slides, I guess, is the where we'd like to be. And to me, that feels like we're presuming where we'd like to be already and sort of the intent of this process is to figure out where we'd like to be as a community. And, and so, that just seemed odd to me. I don't, I, I mean, I, you know, as far as everything I've looked at, this is probably where we, I mean, marketplace needs to go, but whether or not the community thinks or agrees with that and that's sort of the point of this process, right, is to figure that out. I...
So, part of...
That's the only thing that sort of threw me a little bit.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. And we, we talked about coming at that in a couple of different ways. I think the basis for the where we want to be components comes directly from the public input we've heard to date. So, I think what we're trying to do is confirm, this is what we've heard so far. Is this consistent? You know, now that you kind of see where this is coming together, does this still make sense? And so, one thought we had after we, we had set this off for your packets is, you know, we don't have a specific question to kind of confirm that in this section. And that's something we'd probably want to add is just, you know, are these ideas consistent with, with your vision for this area? But, you know, I think, does that make sense, Bob, or...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I know we got a little bit of information.
Is there another way to phrase that?
I think that first round that we had was, you know, I mean, I think it brought to light a lot of things and we gathered some information, but really mostly we gathered enough information to realize we all needed to go through this in a little more detail to figure out where we want to be. So, I don't know what the right words are, but...
You can just change it to a question. We can just change it to a question.
Sure.
Yeah.
Where we'd like to be, question mark, you know?
Yeah, that actually would probably do it if it were. Yeah, no, I would agree with that.
And then we can add a specific question about that, that people can respond to specifics.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see. So, let's, I just had a couple of other comments. So, the surface parking being underutilized. Do we know, does the marketplace agree with that? The, I mean, I, there are times I think it's underutilized and there are other times I'm over there and it's utilized, you know, at least in front of Target, Ross and Costco, it's, gets pretty full, but...
Yeah, I think we could say some, I mean, there are portions of that that are more underutilized than others, so we could, we could clarify that.
Yeah, so I can see a asphalt or something, but, um, let's see. It said, "The overall scale of the center is perceived as overwhelming and hard to navigate." My only question on that was, well, I wasn't sure where that comment came from, but it's, I mean, it's a big box. So, I'm more, and I'm not questioning the statement as much, I'm curious, is that what a big box shopping center should be? I mean, is it well-designed for a big, for what it is, or not? I'm asking, I'm asking you.
The comment, the comment comes from, or the observation comes from feedback we heard about difficulty with wayfinding and people not really understanding what's actually in the center. And so, wanting to break it down a little bit more and be able to, you know, have a, have a more intuitive kind of navigation through the center to make it better utilized. So, so that's, you know, us putting it in...
That sounded a whole lot better than that. What you just said sounded a whole lot better.
True, wait, sure, okay.
Yeah, just like, you know, people can't, you know, were, you know, unable to, to think, be unable to find things. And I know signage is an issue. I know the, the smaller stores feel like they can't be seen and...
Okay.
And I think some of the, one or two of the comments were, like, it's difficult to get from one, one retailer to another, you know, where you have to get in your vehicle, like, going from Whole Foods over to Target, you know?
Or even Whole Foods over to Panera for that matter. Yeah, yeah, people just don't like to walk through. Yeah, it's, it's challenging for pedestrians, because it doesn't feel like it's hard to navigate. I mean, you drive in, you have your circle, you can see your stuff when you go in, but you can't, once you're in there, you can't walk anywhere. You can't, it's just not comfortable to go anywhere. So, yeah. But, it's not a big deal, it's just a...
Yeah, we can, we can work on that in the ravage. All right.
That was all I had on those.
I guess I want to tag on one thing. So, I think that it is a lot of, one of the stuff that might seem intuitive to the folks that study this all the time and even me and I don't get to study this all the time, but, you know, that it, it makes sense that, I think that some of the market analysis is only, I think it needs to be presented as, the market analysis that we found is kind of corroborating what we heard from the residents in October, you know, that, you know, for this or that, you know, you know. And I, I think once you get to the end of this presentation, you kind of see that if we make certain changes, you know, some of Chaney's suggested changes in, in road design and configuration will address visibility concerns, will address walkability. I mean, there's all these things that address the concerns that were outlined. It's just a matter of kind of piecing it all together and doing it in a, in a way that connects all the dots for everybody. So, it is key how this is presented to the public. And I think where we are today, you know, it's not that it's stated wrong necessarily. We just need to reinforce and clarify that where we are today, that all of those bullets are based on what we heard in October. And if there's clarification that needs to be made to either side, you know, where we'd like to be, or where we are today, or something that needs to be elaborated on, like, if there's another bullet that somebody wants to add, that's fine too. We're, we're open to feedback on both pieces. But, I think when you step back and you kind of see the broader picture, and I think that's where it's, you know, I'm glad Clarion's here doing this. It's, it's hard to connect every dot, because it really, I mean, like, once I, we met a week and a half ago or something like that and I walked out of the meeting thinking like, you know, this really makes sense, you know, like, and I had an email follow-up with Darcy saying, like, the more I think about it, the more we just need to keep connecting, like, these dots that, you know, not only are, you know, if we move the road, do we address a traffic issue, like, we split the traffic between the two things, but we actually address the visibility issue by having the road be closer to Target and Costco and, you know, one of the primary roads be circulated that way rather than Marshall. So, we'll get into all that once we get to the slide.
Yeah, exactly.
But that's, that's part of, you know, I guess, this discussion and it's just kind of framing, framing the way it goes.
Go back one slide for just a minute, please, for just a second. You don't mean Sam's Club, do you? Should that be Costco?
No.
Oh, okay.
The, oh, solid anchor tenants. That one does need to, yeah, that one does need to go to Costco. You're right. There is a Sam's Club somewhere else, but that's a good catch. Sam's Club's listed as vacant somewhere else. Yeah.
I didn't catch that either. Good catch. So, yeah, Costco.
And actually, the version I have some has...
I thought it said Costco.
I asked Costco too, so I...
It's the updated version now.
Oh, yeah, mine says Costco. Yeah, yeah.
Mine says Costco too, so I didn't catch it either.
Don't use that one.
We may have saved it wrong, so if we did, I apologize.
All right.
That's the one that says final, but, uh...
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so it sounds like, you know, now that we've got this slide up and we look at, you know, I think part of why we combined, you know, the overall context under this one heading or one principle is that a lot of these things are related in terms of growth pressure and, you know, kind of changes in and around Northwest Superior. That really impacts the marketplace as much as original town. So, that's why we kept them together. So, I think, you know, to the earlier point, we can either break this into two or, or keep it as one and just clarify the title. So, any different observations now that we've, we've got it in front of us?
Yes, yes, I have one. First of all, let me apologize for being late. Sorry about that. But addressing this, I do like the idea of having them broken out. I'd like to see kind of residential be more specific to, and to this, this process and to this presentation, because even though what we have touches on that, that is going to be an area that will need to be addressed. And I think we might as well do that now as opposed to waiting until some other point in time and be able to get this done as, as a unit. So, I would like to see that broken out.
We will do that. All right. Any other comments, suggestions on the guiding principles before we move on? Okay. All right, so, getting into potential scenarios, key choices, I think, you recall in the fall, we had kind of more dots on the map and we really got into some specifics in terms of different locations. We've narrowed down the scope of that somewhat for this conversation, I think partially because there's a lot to cover, but I think the more we got into it, the more the relationships between those areas became kind of hard to separate. And so, we have kept the Superior marketplace separate for conversation purposes. We've combined original town and the Second Avenue property because, you know, in, in terms of where we go from here, you know, that's really going to impact both. And so, we, we didn't want to separate that conversation there. And then we've also, I think, looking based on what we've learned from the, the market assessment, I think the other ideas that came up for 76th Street properties, you know, that's a pretty isolated property in terms of, you've got the existing storage facility. It's a little bit of a unique animal. And I think some of the ideas that came up for that property, for example, were, were focused on, you know, maybe we could have neighborhood commercial or some of those other things. And we just don't think that's viable. So, I think we've, we've tried to narrow that down in terms of, you know, trying to be realistic about where we go from here. So, the current plan recommendations for that site, we think are probably appropriate in the context of kind of where we are. So, we've narrowed it down into kind of two larger chunks of, of information and discussion.
Yes, my only concern is, I mean, part of this, part of this discussion is, it's going to, my...
I'm sorry. Part of this, the discussion is, you know, how many people end up in this area? You know, what do, what do we need for it to be viable? What's tolerable for an area this size? What's it do for quality of life and those types of things? And those 76th Street properties, I mean, they have the potential of, you know, hundreds of people being plopped down on there, you know, if we're not thinking about it, right? That could be senior center, that could be apartments, it could be a variety of things. And I, are, is this suggesting we, we wouldn't talk about 76th Street or just that the options that were, that people were thinking about in our first phase were not viable?
So, I think ultimately it's going to fit into the overall capacity conversation. So, we've got a baseline capacity in terms of, you know, what's out there today, you know, if existing zoning built out, you know, we've got a lot of big spreadsheet to kind of do that. So, as we start to look at other alternatives, we can kind of give you the answers to those questions in terms of what might the ultimate population be of Northwest Superior and, you know, what, how does that compare in the different scenarios? So, I don't think it's so much that we didn't necessarily want to, you know, don't need to talk about it, but I think potentially carry forward those assumptions as we get into refinements on these other areas. It may be that we bring it back then and talk about it in the context of where the community preferences are on these larger questions. That would be one option, but we can certainly open other ideas on that.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to lose sight of, I mean, that's just a large area for a lot of residential or office, I mean, for that matter. I mean, it's...
Does this also mean though, potentially, and again, I'm with Commissioner Stewart, my apologies for being late, when you say current policy direction, are you referring to the existing comprehensive plan, that we already have policies in place that what we heard, there really isn't, we can rely on those, we don't need to...
That's our, that's our professional opinion. Yeah. But I think, to the chair's point, I think we can, we can bring that back and provide some context, but I think we didn't want to, you know, continue to move in that direction if ultimately we don't think it's viable as a sound recommendation. Okay. All right. So, moving into the marketplace, you know, just a quick reminder for folks about the TOP study. This really builds on the work that was done for that. And so, Chaney Bostic, she is an urban designer... And so Chaney Bostic, she is an urban designer architect who is going to be kind of talking through this section. She put together these concepts, she's really helped us kind of break this down, and come up with some, some new ideas to kind of help build on that initial TOP study work. So part of what she's going to do is kind of talk about how the guiding principles really helped inform these concepts, and so connectivity, the circulation and access, she's really looked at this as, you know, how do we break this down into kind of more meaningful chunks or districts within this larger district? So she'll kind of run through, you know, the different ideas that, that kind of jumped out at her in terms of how to think about the marketplace. You know, I think when we were here last month, and we showed the aerial perspective, and just all the parking, I think everybody kind of gasped a little bit, but, you know, in terms of just how do we start to break this down? So she'll kind of run through those pretty quickly. This graphic here really kind of emphasizes, you know, what went into those discussions, is really thinking about how do we try to break this down in a way that doesn't disrupt the areas of the marketplace that are most successful today, and that the town really relies on most, in terms of tax base and, and, you know, kind of services. So, so those are kind of the things to protect, and then, you know, kind of focusing on this, this center, as well as the TOD opportunity, so, thinking about how to, how to create that center within a center. So she's set up three different scenarios, and I think in all cases, the other kind of key principle that really came up is, it needs to be realistic, and attainable, and incremental in terms of how to look at this. And so for each of these, she's really kind of laid out, you know, step one would be the following, and then you would probably look at this next, and, you know, recognizing that, you know, in some cases, there would be significant infrastructure costs, in other cases, you're more working with what you have, and so, kind of walking through the different ways to look at...
Do you want to switch over to the carpool? Martin just saved it.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, because I know that these streets have all been renamed and everything.
Oh, okay, alright, sure.
So, close out of that one. Let's go. This should be in here, but I think I have to exit out, and come back in, I wonder if it could be there. Huh. Well, finals, now the first word.
That one is what?
Seven thirty, there we go. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's good.
And then we were somewhere around twenty-eight, I think. Well, that's not going to work, because I don't have it on.
Yeah, that was cool. Okay.
I just started up.
Alright, so idea would be that we'll just kind of walk through where we are today, and then start to think about, you know, how do we create those connections, what would need to happen in, in terms of how different scenarios might play out? You know, she's thought about all the specifics in terms of, we need to shift parking here as a temporary measure, then we would add in additional things, so, so there's a lot of components to this, in terms of, of, you know, what might work. The colors, and we may want to put like a little color legend on here, now that I'm looking at this, these are basically land use colors, so the, the red represents retail opportunity, kind of smaller scale, the orange is multifamily residential, blue, I think, is office, and purple, I think, is probably public. So, so we'll, we'll put a legend on there for that, so it's a little bit more obvious, but basic idea is just to show general mix of uses that might be possible in those different scenarios. So, and I think the key here is, you know, kind of maximizing your, your access to the BRT, but again, kind of protecting those edges as changes might occur. So, so there's three different concepts, and I'm not going to go into, you know, kind of all the, all the details on this, I won't do it justice like Chaney will, but I think that's basically kind of how we'll kind of move through those, is just walk through the different concepts.
This was a Marshall Road realignment one, right? No?
No, no.
No.
Where's, um...
I think that's two, maybe.
So, um...
Yeah, it's the...
Second one, right?
The Central Park one, yeah.
Okay.
Scenario B, Marketplace Square, or whatever.
Okay, okay, alright.
Yeah, so this one's, you know, much more significant in terms of kind of shifts that would occur. And starts to kind of create that connection back to other parts, there's probably, and we've got that summary at the end that kind of compares units and square footage, that sort of thing. And then three is a little bit more targeted. Oops, where do we get back to? So questions or suggestions on kind of, you know, visually how those read, any ideas or reactions? Questions about the details?
I think the graphics look great, I think they're really helpful in conveying kind of the mass and the intensity of kind of what could be out there. I think the legend is a really good idea, and including, you know, kind of what the pink lines are, just intended to show bike and bed enhancements and connectivity. I think maybe a little bit of a disclaimer, you know, private property, right, all of that, that would need to, you know, city, town can't make this happen, kind of a thing, we'd have to have only property owners, because obviously, some buildings are going away with some of these scenarios, but I think they're, I think they're interesting graphics to kind of contemplate.
I also thank for ease of viewing, because it did take me a second to get oriented, but on the white box, the big boxes, it may be if the logos of the existing company, the existing...
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 street names, too, it'd be good, just, that'll give people quick context.
The other thing that might be helpful as we're talking, I think, is maybe just an upfront slide about kind of assumptions, and, you know, the, you know, these are preliminary concepts. I think the other thing that really kind of pops up in each of these is, is, you know, based on feedback we heard, trying to keep that new intensity, you know, away from Original Town, is, is also kind of one of the conversations that we had, that you're really kind of adding a fair bit, but it's, it's kind of on the far side in terms of intensity. So we could kind of frame up some of those things, so that it's kind of spelled out at the beginning.
Yeah, and I think just the way the slides are ordered, understanding, I think, to, you know, Commissioner McCool's point, some of like, what exactly is Marshall Road doing in this one? I think that's not intuitive when you're looking at it from this view. It is a lot more when you look at the, kind of the figure ground ones later on, and then I guess, you know, when we get to that, I'm curious, maybe just it'll come out in her presentation, the thoughts on the Marshall Road realignment, and from a functionality perspective, if that's... Also, too, right, that C dot, it's a C dot road, so we'd need to, from a kind of stakeholder perspective.
Okay, that's helpful. Alright.
And there's, real quick, in several of these, is there a reason that we don't see further to the left, or further to this...
South?
Yeah, south. You know, it includes like the, the Sports Authority building, because that just seems to be left off. Just wondering if we can get a little more, I mean, it doesn't have to be much, but slightly more to include that area, so you could almost see where Marshall ties in.
Kind of over here.
And that's a good point, too, I know some, some conversations in the past have thought about maybe, and I know we potentially have some utility conflicts in there, but maybe a right-in, right-out, kind of between Sports Authority and that first strip of in-line, that maybe could alleviate some of the congestion further in, or help make that Sports Authority a little more viable, so it's not, so you don't have to loop so far back around.
Yeah, and I think one of the things we can mention, too, I mean, once we get through these initial conversations about, you know, what, what does everybody like or dislike about these different ideas, and we work towards a preliminary preferred, then we'll work with Alex on the traffic analysis and refine these ideas, so that may be where that comes up as well, is just, you know, what works better or not, so, but we can definitely shift a little bit.
Yeah, because I think you're eliminating a, a critical portion of, of the redevelopment, could be off to the left a little bit, to the south.
Yeah, that whole corner of the...
Yeah.
Is missing, yeah, yeah. And, yeah, if you could label as much as, as you can, I mean, even Founders Park, and that part of Original Town, and Seventy-Sixth Street along the back, top edge there, and just, just think it'll just make, make it easy for people to know what they're looking at pretty quickly.
Okay, no, those are great suggestions.
This scenario C only seemed to have two phases, too, whereas scenario A and B each had three. I didn't know if that got left off, or if it was just, this is more brief, so if you go back to scenario B, there's three slides, and then scenario two, there's just two, two phases, and I don't know if there's a reason for that, or if it's, and then I guess the other thing is, you know, one of the, I guess, none of, none of these technically seemed, and I know that, you know, from a redevelopment standpoint, the, the idea, and I think that needs to be conveyed, too, is that we're not really wanting to touch, or mess with, you know, the, the anchors that are out here, that are, that are working and thriving, and that the idea is that we're, you know, supplementing, you know, their, you know, next 25 years viability by adding residential, so all that, I assume, is going to get explained. But in terms of, you know, when we, we mentioned something earlier, you know, one, as I think Commissioner McCool already mentioned, was like, if, if retail is already saturated on Thirty-Sixth, when we get into that slide at the end, you know, most of what's being introduced is more retail, not more residential or more office, so that needs to be explained. But then the C, a parking issue, I mean, we're, we're taking a small bite at the amount of parking, which is really concentrated much further west of here, so if, if there's a reason that we're not addressing it, then that needs to be explained in terms of, you know, Target and Costco are, you know, not likely to, you know, and this is kind of a, you know, the connecting the dots type of thing that I was talking about, and even if it's, you know, somewhat obvious to, you know, the professionals like Matt, I want, you know, it to be kind of spelled out for the public as much as possible, that, that those things are just seen as untouchable, or are they touchable? I mean, I remember one of the conversations that we've had, I don't know if it was through the ULI, or through, of course, of this iteration, was, you know, that continuing, if this, you know, we have that Main Street concept, I think the potential to have, you know, if it's Main Street, or Spine Street, or whatever we're calling it, the one that runs east-west, we have the potential to add, you know, more inline stores on the west side of that roundabout. That is all, you know, with, within one, with, with getting buy-in from one property owner, that being Bricksmore. And I think some of that conversation is just like, what can the town do? The town could, you know, proactively try to rezone this area to allow for, you know, additional pad sites or additional development, but then what is that mix at the end of the day? And I think that that's where there's still like a disconnect between, you know, when you have a slide that leads with retail being saturated on the Thirty-Sixth corridor, what are we adding here? And then how do we get to that mix really needs to be explained, at least in, in my estimation.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point, and part of what I didn't explain is, is that, you know, a fair amount of that is replacing what you have, and so you're not necessarily fully displacing people, but you're creating new spaces that could easily accommodate a lot of what you are displacing, so you're retaining some of your existing space, and consolidating it, trying to make it more vibrant, so, but we can, I think that's a great...
And that's how you get to that walkability that the people are also asking for, you know, is to have it kind of consolidated, and not have it so spread out. So we kind of have like a, a regional destination on the west side of the site, and we have a more intimate, walkable, you know, destination for, for folks to actually go and stay at, and get from one place to another, more vibrant, I guess, on the, on the east side of the site.
Yep.
And Darcy, I, so I think I brought this up before, too, but the, the office situation, and why we're not seeing more office coming in here, and there are office buildings going up all around us, and I'm not what's, I'm not sure what's going on with the market, and I'm curious if you know, I mean, Boulder, I mean, we're getting pushed out, we got pushed out of Boulder, you know, a big company came in and took over a 40,000 square foot building, and 40 people got displaced, and sent around to a, you know, a lot of people came out to Lewisville, and I tried to come to Superior, but there was, there's just really nothing here. What are we seeing with office? I mean, is it, we're, we're not building anything, but I just keep, I mean, people in downtown Boulder can't afford to be in downtown Boulder, so they're coming out to East Boulder, where we've been forever, so Flatiron's Technology Park is changing drastically, people are getting pushed out of that, larger companies are coming in and taking over buildings. The park itself is actually encouraging that, it's a lot easier for them, obviously, to manage a single tenant than 40 tenants, but then those smaller tenants and incubator companies are trying to figure out where to go, right, and where it's affordable. I mean, looking over here, it took weeks to find a place for a couple thousand square feet, right? I'm not looking for 10 or 15. Is that, is that a trend that's happening, that we could, you know, consider, consider being able to accommodate?
So the, the general sense from EPS was that office was not super strong here, I think, but I think what we need to do is maybe just add a slide specifically talking about office, a lot of people were interested in that, and we need to be able to speak to that, so we'll add a slide to kind of frame up, you know, some of those questions.
I see a lot of people looking, and it is smaller spaces, and I get it, those are a little harder to, to manage, and, I mean, it could be that owners just aren't interested in accommodating, you know, 500 to 5,000 square feet, you know, there are buildings going over here in, in Lewisville, a lot of the minimums are, are 7,000, 10,000 square feet, right? But it seemed like in a center like this, smaller office space could be thought about.
Okay, no, we'll, we'll build in some, a little bit of context on that.
Somebody has to want to do it, of course, but...
Okay. Alright, anything else on those before we move on? That's all really helpful feedback. So that's really just focused on the circulation, and then kind of a comparison in terms of overall units, commercial, and maybe what we can do on the capacity to that earlier point, is talk about how much of that would be replacing what's there versus new space, so...
And you do mention office a good bit in here, too, so. Scenario B being a big one.
Yeah, it is.
I can't remember the gentleman's name that participated in the ULI study, but his specialty was commercial office, and he actually thought that, from what I recall, he thought that the town, town center, and actually, the marketplace in general, was ripe for office development, based on the forces of, of Boulder, but I think that the tricky thing, and I think that part of the reason that we haven't had as much retail or office is that you see, like, all of a sudden Boulder's doing a lot more intel. For a while, Boulder wasn't really developing at all, and so like, until Boulder kind of slows down, then we get the residue, or whatever, the residual effects of that, yeah.
Well, it's pushing, it is pushing a lot of people out.
Yeah, it's, it's doing that, too, but it's, when, when it's pushing somebody out, it's not always the people that can come and build new, so...
Sure.
That's the trick, I think, to have the, either have existing space is easier to fill, or to, you know, but net new space, or whatever, is a little bit trickier to generate, so...
Yeah.
I wonder if another thing that might be helpful here, just in maybe another row at the bottom, is kind of, you know, I don't know whether it's level of complexity, or, you know, related to cost, you know, sort of how many dollar signs, or, I mean, you've pointed out the Marshall Road, there's, you know, challenges in terms of, of, you know, each of these that are unique, and so maybe just highlighting some of those might help kind of frame that up a little bit, too.
And not to keep pounding on office, but I, I'm going to a little bit. So, I mean, there are a lot of, lot of, lot of companies are looking at Colorado, and they're looking at Boulder County. Is part of this just creating an environment where we might be able to attract, you know, I mean, there's no, you know, Popzockets, for example, took over that 40,000 square foot building, I think that's who it is, that's going into Boulder, right? So, and I, and they're having to move, they need bigger space, I mean, can we create a situation where we might want to, might get somebody to be interested in coming here? I mean, I mean, I like being around a downtown, right, restaurants, walkability, those types of things, and could we be thinking about that as we think through Northwest Superior? Is it, could we accommodate a, a decent-sized organization with maybe 250 employees, or 500 employees, or something like that, in, in an area like this? Or 100, I mean, I'm not sure what the number is, but... And I, and I don't know if Bricksmore's interested in, in doing that, but it would seem like that would just bring a lot of daytime people in, and... And I, and I don't know if Bricksmore's interested in, in doing that, but it would seem like that would just bring a lot of daytime people in, and.
We will try to tease out some of those issues a little bit more, and I think also, you know, can't do the math while I'm standing here on the fly, but in terms of just, you know, representative, how many employees would you be generally talking about in terms of some of these different options? And I think the other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, those, those spaces are pretty interchangeable in terms of, you know, whether it's residential or office, all of that can be, you know, moved around and, and looked at in different ways, so these are just representative ideas.
Okay.
All right.
Might we also look at timeframes?
Oh, in terms of phase, how that phasing might.
And how the phases are going to work, and when each phase will come in? One of the other things that might be helpful for kind of the average person, I would think, is the, actually the potential to have some success in completing any of these scenarios that are presented to us. So, I don't know if there's a way to do that without sounding grim, or, you know, overly exuberant about the possibility of us accomplishing these goals.
So I didn't quite catch the very first part of, of what you said, can you repeat that, please?
Um, which part?
Well, in, in terms of, I, I didn't quite understand, so is it just sort of, kind of giving some context in terms to, you know, sort of, you know, logistically, what would it take? Is that kind of what you're getting at? Property owner cooperation, you know, some zoning changes, market board, I mean, just a little bit of framing in terms of.
Exactly, and you started to.
How might this happen?
Allude to that, but yeah, exactly, that's a, you know, what is the possibility that we can, as a, as a community accomplish this? Without sounding like this is an, an exercise without the possibility of, of a goal.
Yeah, I think what's, what's the level of the possibility of actually attaining this, right? So, kind of like what you said, who are all, who are all kind of the key players, and then, you know, what things have to happen in the market? So I think so folks don't think, you know, they're going to walk away from this plan, and people are going to pull building permits, you know, this could take ten years to realize, twenty years to realize, certain market conditions to realize. Okay.
Do we, and do we have any sense from Bricksmore, is it Bricksmore, right, that, that they're even interested in this? I mean, it came out in the, you know, the first set of meetings that, that she seemed a bit, seemed interested, but I don't know if it, who the right players are.
I think locally, locally, they're, they're more in tune with the possibility out here, and regionally, perhaps not as much. And then I think if you were to speak with Bill Jinks versus Bricksmore, you'd hear two different stories about the viability of office, retail, all of those things. So, Bricksmore historically, from what I understand, is a commercial, you know, mall type of operator, and they don't, they, they have done some office space and some mixed-use spaces, but that's the exception, that's not the norm for them, so. I think, you know, this is just as much of a educational, or, for me, it's just as much of an educational piece for everybody involved, you know, so that we can actually show them that the town's interested in something more out here. The town recognizes that this is a twenty-year-old model, you know, as far as a, a regional commercial area, and that we also feel like the potential there is, is a lot greater, so I think that a lot of this is a vision for what the town can do, and then what follows from there. You know, but, but in my mind, what the town can do is, is, you know, and if that's what the support of the community is, is we could rezone this for, to allow for other uses, and that's pretty easy, and then Bricksmore would be given a property that has a potential for office and a potential for residential, and they would have the opportunity to market that, or sell off pieces of land, you know, accordingly, and that would make that much more likely than it's sitting as it does today. So, but, yeah, so far, I don't know how much traction we have with Bricksmore.
Okay.
So.
Only to add to one more thing, but Shelley Kimball, the more local representative, did come and participate in October, and she will certainly be invited to participate through this process. She seemed more, you know, she, she was fairly engaged with the whole process, so I think that's a positive, so, sorry, I'm done.
All right, so, yeah, so in terms of kind of the flow, you know, our intent is just to ask one kind of general question, kind of gut feel, which of these feels more viable to you, which one is more appealing to you, but then just have some time for discussion to try to get into, you know, what is it that, you know, you like, or dislike, or concerns you? Just have a little bit more of a dialogue, so we should have, you know, fifteen minutes at least to kind of cover, have some of that discussion before we move on. In terms of that, so, does that general approach make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I assume this will be a little more open and not quite as specific as those questions, but.
Well, I mean, they're just prompt questions, so.
Okay.
But I mean, if you have suggestions on the.
Well, I mean, the only note I put is there an opportunity to, to discuss concerns about any given selection, right? So they, yeah, yes, I like that selection, but gee, I, I really didn't like this about it, or that about it, or, or that, and maybe the third bullet point kind of gets there, but what I was hoping is that this, you know, although we're framing a bit of this, it needs to be flexible enough that, you know, gee, I like this about C, and this about A, and really hate the realignment of Marshall, but like what we did, you know, like, like the layout of C, you know, those types of things, right?
And we'll try to emphasize, I think none of these is, you know, likely to move forward as one, it's going to be some hybrid of those, so we'll try to emphasize that.
Just encourage that discussion, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so shifting gears into Original Town and vicinity, and that really just means Second Avenue property. So Sung's done a fair bit of more detailed analysis in terms of existing capacity, you know, what's really out there. So, you know, I think in terms of, of kind of framing this conversation, what we've said is, you know, a hundred plus new homes, there's no way to predict, you know, the level of infill or redevelopment that you'd likely have, but if the Second Avenue property moves forward, that's a pretty good chunk of that hundred, and then you're likely to see some additional on top of that, so trying to emphasize that there's a lot of different ways that that's going to happen, and kind of help people understand, you know, the different dynamics of different parts of Original Town. So kind of a quick recap in terms of, you know, why are, why are we even asking this question? In terms of, you know, we had some early conversations about just the idea of, you know, whether or not we should be looking at potential design standards or other changes, and kind of what the responses were, and I think that, you know, as you noted earlier, you know, there's a lot more, a lot more detail to get into, so that's why we're, why we're having the conversation, and, you know, we've tried to focus our additional information that we'll talk about on some of the issues that really came out of that, so massing in scale, the size of homes, you know, people were concerned about, as well as, you know, some new opportunities related to ADUs, that sort of thing, so, so just a little bit of context. So we'll talk about the two different areas, and then, you know, some of the possible ways that we can address that, and so we've got more detail in terms of, you know, here's where we are in terms of, of the code today, what the requirements are, you know, for the different zone districts here, RL and RM, and, you know, basically what we've done, Sung has gone through and modeled, you know, kind of representative blocks, these are hybrid blocks, there's no specific location, but just to give a sense, and these models that, that he built are based on the Maple Street homes, which I think a lot of people can relate to, and so we wanted to kind of bring that into the conversation just as a, you know, point of reference, that, you know, that's the scale that kind of represents what you're likely to see, and, you know, you can do a front-loaded garage, which isn't necessarily typical in Original Town today. The other thing that kind of jumped out at us is that, you know, you could have an accessory building that's the same height, you know, thirty-two feet as primary structure, and that's, that's pretty unusual to have kind of the same height there.
Or taller.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what you would have in your garage attic that would be that tall, but, you know, if you had ADU allowances, that might, might make more sense, but it's, it's an interesting provision for sure, so, so yeah, so we wanted to just kind of walk through typical fifty by one hundred and forty lots, some of the lots have obviously been consolidated, there's some variety, but just to give people a sense of, you know, how that might change over time. And then to also highlight another existing provision in the code which relates to the lot splits, and so in cases where lots have been consolidated over time, you do have the ability through the subdivision process to come in and say, you know, we're going to revert back to the original plating, which, you know, from a context standpoint, makes a lot of sense in terms of what you're trying to protect, but it does have potentially some, some larger impacts if someone were to do that, you know, on a larger scale, and so just wanted to kind of put that into context and, and, you know, let folks know that that was something that's in your code now that, you know, could happen pretty easily.
So before you move on, the last sentence on this slide is incorrect. The subdivision review process, if they were to go back to the original zoning, is an administrative, is an administrative process to kind of, depending on what it is, or it could just be, you, you don't even have to go through a replat, we would just recognize the original platted lots. So if somebody had the three lots on top, and they decided to get rid of that building, they could go, we would recognize the three originally platted lots, and they could just go off the original subdivision, which was the fifty by one hundred and forty foot lots, and redevelop it.
No process required, basically.
Yeah, basically, you had your building permits.
Okay, so basically we can drop that last sentence.
Right, but that's an important kind of caveat for people to understand, is to, like, that's not only kind of encouraging of redevelopment, but it's also discouraging of preservation, so I think it's just something for folks to understand, so.
And also, the setbacks on a corner lot, are they different? Like, is it ten feet if you're on a, if you're on a side street, right, if you're on a corner? It's not five feet on that side yard, that's ten feet, right?
If it's an internal property line, so not on a corner, it's five feet for a single-family home, if it's a, on a corner lot for a single-family home, it's ten feet from the, the corner lot line, or whatever, so, from a right-of-way.
Yeah.
All right, so moving into the RM areas, the, the requirements are fairly similar, the density is higher, but you can also have different types of housing, and that's important for people to understand, so not just single-family, but small-scale multifamilies too, so that could be a duplex, a townhome, maximum of six units per lot. Otherwise, the parameters are fairly similar to the RL. So, you know, we obviously have less areas that are zoned RM currently, but, you know, part of the conversation's been, you know, ultimately someone could rezone the IL to RM, and then, you know, as this area, the second street property builds out, that has the same requirements, so. So, again, kind of representative context, if someone wants to come in and, you know, redevelop some of those existing properties, what might you see? So in this case, you know, you could have a couple of duplexes, and you could also have kind of some of those larger, you know, it's still a small-scale building for a multifamily building, but I think compared to what's there today, it would be significantly different. In this case, this is a fourplex, so. So that's the context there, and then we also wanted to just, you know, again, because this is RM, any types of design standards or other changes that we talked about, you know, in Original Town proper would apply here as well, and so wanted to just kind of talk about, you know, kind of what's been looked at in the past, and, you know, how that might shake out in terms of the existing zoning, so prior submittal, you know, seventy-four dwelling units, the existing plating, you know, there's obviously a lot of conversation about access and different things, but in terms of kind of consistency with Original Town, you know, this concept was, was pretty close to that, so this is something that could happen under your current zoning. But there were also discussions about looking at, you know, what might we do through the PD process, and so, you know, in that case, you have a pretty different pattern, that's pretty different than Original Town is today, and so there's, you know, different ways of looking at that, but in this case, you know, s- single-family homes, front-loaded garages, so that whole, the provision in your code now where that's okay, you know, that's something to consider in terms of, of, you know, how you want to move forward, whether that's something you want to continue to encourage or not. So, from there, I think the question is, is really, you know, so we know what's, what's possible, and we've heard some of the concerns from the community, you know, how might we come at, you know, if there's a desire to address specific issues, what could we do? And so, just briefly talking about, you know, some of the options, it can be design guidelines, design standards, or overlay district, also the potential for incentives, so a lot of communities decide to, you know, try to use the carrot and a stick approach in terms of, you know, trade-offs between, you know, some require, new requirements, but also giving something back, and so that's something that could be explored.
Back on that slide, I was a little concerned about the this picture, that, and not this, but this, that, that's a really wide lot to put a house of that size and a driveway on the right side of it, and it just seemed like, and that, and maybe you're just trying to get at the sort of the architectural layout.
Yeah, you can use a different photo.
Yeah, that wasn't my favorite choice for a photo, but.
Yeah, that's actually a duplex.
Oh, is it, okay.
Yeah, so, we can, we can change those.
Maybe tweak those, that's fine, okay, go on.
But, you know, trying to give folks, especially when this is available online, a clear understanding of, you know, how would this tool be used, what would it mean? You know, kind of the should versus the shall, between guidelines and standards, you know, we've got some examples here in terms of, you know, what might that kind of layout like in terms of what a potential guideline or standard might look like, and then some of the, you know, kind of pros and cons from different perspectives in terms of, you know, some are very flexible, you know, flexibility is also, means there's a lot of negotiation that happens, and, you know, a lot of uncertainty, which is, can be really challenging, so, you know, all things to consider as the community kind of weighs, you know, whether or not they want to pursue any of these options.
So it seems like this slide's going to generate a ton of conversation, or discussion, or questions, I'm presuming, just, I mean, I had a bunch just looking at it. Is there going to be time to talk about this slide and help people understand?
Yeah.
The differences, because I think that's going to be important, and I, you know, for example, the, the design standard slash overlay district felt like, I mean, if, if, if it's sort of judged based on the house next door, then the house here gets built to the house next door one way, but then later the house next door goes down on, they get to base it on the, you know, the house that was built a little bit later, right, and I, and I guess that creates just a slow change, but I think people really need to understand that. And then this was just an observation, it may just be the reality of regulatory incentives, it, it felt like it was more of a positive spin, whereas the first two items seemed to be written as a, you know, a mix of negative and positive spins, like there's not really anything negative about regulatory incentives, it offers a way to balance, reduce flexibility of standards with a tangible benefit, whereas the other ones are less flexible, and, you know, may result in smaller homes that are allowed, yeah, it just felt a little different. Not necessarily suggesting a change, but if you wouldn't mind just looking at it and thinking about it.
The one, I mean, obvious thing to regulatory incentives is voluntary, so there's no guarantee we get any control over, I mean, whether or not somebody chooses to do something, so that's the easy bullet to throw in there.
Yep, yep.
I think that, I guess my greater question for this, and I think it's something that, you know, Darcy's great at, I wouldn't be so much, but the questions are going to come, this is a kind of a two-part process, you know, we're, I think Darcy's objective here is to kind of get some direction from everybody as to, do you want to go with regulatory incentives, or are you more interested in design guidelines, or, so I guess if you could speak to how, you know, how you're going to be able to frame that, and understand that, like, well, if we get the direction that, you know, nobody wants anything that's mandatory, or more interested in regulatory incentives, you know, what do you, I mean, what's, what's that next phase for that, for that? You'll come back in, you know, September and have, you know, a set of tools that we could potentially use, that's where I see this going, but.
Yeah, no, I think that, that's a really good point, and I think maybe we can, you know, maybe we don't even need the examples here, but we can, you know, have a bit more information in terms of, of, you know, kind of how that might play out. I think one of the, the things that, that, you know, I'll be sure to touch on is it's, it's pretty unusual that you would have incentives without some companion guidelines or standards, so it's not necessarily always a standalone thing that you could just, you know. that you could just, you know, hope that people do. It's, it's usually something that's kind of a companion tool with one of these other two. And so, that's something we probably want to emphasize. And it, you know, it doesn't apply to, um, it's, I guess, not fair to say it doesn't apply. It's harder to apply to things, um, to certain aspects of, you know, some of the issues we've talked about versus others. So, something like lot coverage is, is very easy to calculate a percentage and say, we're going to, you know, give you five if you do this, you know, make this change over here. When you start getting into building mass, I mean, it could get really complicated and I don't think that's really what we've heard in terms of a direction that you want to go. So, it has maybe, and maybe that's one of the negatives, is it has, you know, a more limited applicability in terms of, you know, how it might help us here.
As a baseline and as, I guess, an example, like, example to work off is that forty percent lot coverage that's allowed? Is that high, is it low, is it?
It's pretty generous, um, compared to what's out there. And I think you guys got the copies of the supplemental analysis in the back of the presentation that Sung had pulled together. I mean, your average now is, you know, twenty-two to twenty-five, is that right, Sung?
Yeah.
So, it's, it, you know, whether or not you think it's a high number currently, I think it's high compared to what's out there today. And that's where, you know, the reaction typically comes in is when, you know, someone builds to what's allowed, it's, it's a big change.
Twice as much as what's out there, yeah.
So, you know, that may be okay and maybe it's not. Um, but, but knowing that in terms of where you stand, it's, it's, you know, being realistic, you likely are going to, you know, homes today are bigger than they were in the past. And so, we have to acknowledge that. But, you know, kind of what, what's the right fit here in terms of where the community feels comfortable in terms of, you know, how that changes in the neighborhood over time, so.
As I'm, yeah, as I'm thinking about this too, I'm thinking you could utilize, I think, some of Sung's images in the this-not-this. You know, the photos that you showed, I don't think reflect the really the character, you know, of, um, original town that we see. But I think you could use, you know, some of those model images to reflect, you know, trying to get it height that's more compatible or lot size that's more compatible. So, I think those images are helpful. And then, I think one thing too, as far as, um, kind of some of the pros and cons, I think you touched on it a little bit, but, you know, I'm just thinking like, so I'm a homeowner and I, you know, talking through with them maybe, because I'm anticipating we'll have a lot of homeowners. So, what if I want to do like a small addition off the back? Like, at what point do these regulations come into play? And how, maybe what tools the town, if we go down these routes, what tools the town would need to prepare? I think to help homeowners understand what these mean and kind of how they work. Because I know that, you know, as a homeowner, right? This stuff is complicated and we don't, does this mean I have to hire, you know, an expensive architect now if I want to do something little? So, um, impact, I think, from a homeowner perspective could be helpful.
Yeah, and I had a similar comment, I was sort of saving to the end. But I mean, in, in, like, for example, where our, where our home is, because, because of when it was built, it was built towards the front of the lot. I assume it provided a nice backyard, which it has. But, um, we're not, we can't put a porch on, right? Because all of a sudden, you're, you're, you're already inside the, um, the, right, or the setback for the front. So, these older homes that were built, and there are a lot of them that were, and a lot of people just didn't even pull permits, I'm gathering, because they just, they just went ahead and built whatever they wanted to build and, um, they don't, they, they, so, there's a mix of, of things that have been done and, and those of us who'd love to do that, but we can't, right? And so, uh, I talked to Stephen about the variance process and, um, I don't know whether it's talking about loosening the variance process or providing some guidelines for some of these older homes that are positioned the way they're positioned, so that the variance process can have some guidelines, right? To, to, to deal with that kind of stuff.
The porch is a great example, though, of a case where communities have used that as, you know, as an incentive to say, you know, we want to retain the, the older homes. Porches are, you know, part of our character. We'd like to encourage those, so we'll let you, you know, have some sort of, uh, you know, you can build that within thirty percent of the front setback.
I mean, it'd make that corner just look, I mean, we know it'd look nice. I mean, you know, a lot of, we'd sit out there, it'd just make the front of the house look nicer and that corner look nice. And that's true on, on a number of homes as well. And then, the other piece that, that I didn't seem mentioned was, uh, we have this, another zoning that we don't, that, that's not in use, which is the RCS zoning. As a tool that's currently available to us, um, to, to use. I don't know whether that comes into play in the discussion about original town, but, um, I know there was, there have been discussions about it in the past.
So, it hasn't really been used.
It hasn't ever been used.
Yeah, it was, it was developed, but it was never implemented anywhere.
Yeah, and I don't understand the, the history of it enough to, to speak to it adequately. But I guess, um, original town just seems like so much more complicated than talking about, uh, the marketplace. Like, I, the, the scenario tool that was used in the marketplace seems much easier to follow than, I mean, like, I don't know if there's a way to kind of frame this similarly, or at least kind of clarify that, like, you know, one scenario is we do nothing and, you know, original town develops as, as allowed and you can show, like, have Chaney do kind of the massing of what that looks like for the, you know, the Second Avenue lots and the lots that are, you know, zoned RM. Just expect that, or anticipate that a certain percentage of that turns over in the next ten years or something like that. And, and then, something that kind of, you know, well, if we adopt some design guidelines that control height or temper growth or something like that, this is what this could look like. But really, it feels like we also need to dig down into, you know, and I know we've heard, everyone's got a different opinion and it's, it's great. You know, and hear, you know, the neighbors come out and say, oh, I, you know, I like original town because we don't have, you know, these regulations. And, but, and then, when you try to get them to pin down what character is they're trying to preserve, it's, it's a lot, but the looseness of the, you know, the, the development pattern.
Or when a series of lots develop and they're like, oh crap, what's going to go there now?
Right, yeah, so it's, it's a balance between what's possible and, and what they want to keep. Or, and, and maybe at the end of the day, what we, what we hear is that we just, we don't want, you know, our, my neighbor to double the size of their home overnight. You know, like, we don't want that quick of growth. And there are tools that kind of control or can temper the, you know, the amount of growth. The, the thing I always come back to is the tool that the county uses. And the county uses it because it's, you know, like, they're dealing with six thousand, seven thousand square-foot houses, but it's just a, it's called the presumptive size maximum and it's based on, you know, what is compatible within your subdivision. And it's similar to what, you know, Sung had to kind of at the end is, you know, well, what do we have? We have lots that are, you know, between, you know, twelve hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet and we have a certain percentage covered and all of that stuff. And so, the whole basis of that analysis is that you're entitled to twenty-five, hundred twenty-five percent of whatever the, the average is for that area. And that allows growth to occur over time without it going crazy. So, that's something that might be a very good tool to introduce or discuss or use around here too, so.
And, and on the flip side, I mean, one of, of that, I mean, one of my notes is, I mean, part, part of this process is to find out what people here want to do.
Right.
Right, I mean, it could go the other way too.
What they're concerned about.
Yeah, I mean, I have a note, there's a general assumption that we want to preserve scale and compatibility and all that. And I, in general, would like that idea, but others may not. I'm open to, to hearing that. And we don't, we don't seem to be, you know, talking about that. I think your idea of what will it look like if left to be as it is versus how will it look like if we implement some design standards or maybe a third option?
Yeah, and it almost seems.
Would be really helpful, because I think people need to know. And people may want to say, you know what, we want to leave it as it is because we want to go make a bunch of money and, you know, build million-dollar homes in, in town. I mean, that might be where this goes. And, and it, it's got to be allowed to go where it goes. It, it can't just be.
Right.
Purely guided towards preservation, although, I mean, I know there's a, a desire and a sense that has come out that that's where we want to go. But I think all options need to be on the table, right? That was the whole idea about this, about this area, so, in my mind, at least.
Well, and I think we also, also kind of need to understand is that we might have a lot more information on, you know, where the marketplace discussion is headed after this first meeting and we may have direction for the next step. And it may not be as big of a step for original town. It may be that we need to explore this and, you know, we explore it and then, we just don't get to the same kind of final, I guess, I don't know if that's making sense, but I, I can see that, I, I think that there's more consensus around what could happen with the marketplace and that we need to respond to the fact that this is a twenty-year-old document, you know? Whereas, I think there's a lot less consensus about original town and, you know, and understanding about what's possible or what we like or don't like and all that stuff. So, we may just not get as far and that just needs to be kind of maybe put out there to begin with, you know? And, and understood that although we're looking at these things and these are the two biggest pieces, they're, they're quite different animals too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I like the idea of, of kind of framing them as scenarios. I think it's, you know, to be honest, it's not viable to model the entire thing.
Right, yeah. No, I understand that, yeah.
But I think maybe, you know, I think, um, Sung, you can kick me if I'm, if I'm off-base here. But I think, I mean, we have basically blocks. And so, we could conceivably just, you know, talk about these as scenario one and kind of what that might mean to a particular block. And, you know, kind of how that might change in response. Um, you know, using a lot of the information that we have and just kind of reframing that. Um, I think that's a good idea in terms of making it a little bit more understandable, potentially. You know, I think to be, I mean, we struggled with how, how much detail to get into now because we don't have consensus on those things. And so, I think, um, you know, part of what we wanted to get from you guys is, you know, are we asking the right questions? Um, I think to your point, um, Bob, in terms of the, um, you know, is preservation really what we're trying to do? I mean, we talk about, you know, is that really what we're trying to accomplish? Or are we just really trying to, you know, ensure that what comes in that's new, if someone wants to redevelop, is, you know, a smaller scale than what might otherwise occur and that it's not drastically different? Um, you know, that's an important question, because it's a pretty different way, you'd come at that in a pretty different way than you would, um, assuming that you do want to protect those homes.
Yeah.
So, so circling back on the questions then, I mean, it sounds like we're, we tried to break it down in terms of, um, you know, the types of tools, you know, and we can go into more, more specifics on that, um, you know, or none of the above. I think, as you pointed out, that's absolutely one of the options that's on the table is tools we have are fine, you know, let's end this conversation. That's part of why we're doing this. Or, if, you know, we do want to pursue some tools, what types of things do we really want to address? Or are there things on this list that you say, nah, we don't want to go there? And that's really what we need to know before we kind of go to that next level, because we don't want to bring back, you know, recommendations that say, you know, have a lot of specific, uh, detail in an area that nobody wants to pursue. And so, that's really what we're trying to do. So, you know, this, I think in terms of the, the site planning, um, the site design considerations and then the building form, what we've tried to do is reflect what we heard, but also our observations just in terms of, you know, what we see in other communities. What, what typically would you address in these cases if you really wanted to achieve the things that, you know, some of the ideas that we heard? And so, um, but also keep it fairly simple, because I think that's important. Because, you know, we clearly heard that the, the variety is really important. This is not about, you know, protecting architectural style per se. It's, it's, it's not that. And so, we're not trying to do that. So, we've tried to focus on the things that, you know, relate more to those bigger-picture issues. Does that generally make sense? Are there other thoughts on how to maybe approach that? We're, we're open to ideas.
I think these are good. I think, um, as I'm, it took me a second to figure out why, you know, first, you have it site design and then building massing. So, my first reaction was when I saw, um, I don't know, slide page sixty-eight or whatever, the one previous, why isn't height on this list? You know, but then you're getting to it in this next slide. So, um, you get there, I think, to tie it back or, you know, to maybe talk about the differences. And then, I think some of the existing conditions, um, when you mentioned like, redo lot, reduced lot coverage allowances, um, takes lane to them a little more, you know, maybe what our averages are, because I don't see that data. I mean, I know we had that background data, so they might know, what's the problem with forty percent? Well, you're actually only seeing this percentage out there on average. So, I think a little bit of the background. We assume most people know what a setback is. We might not, you know, um, go ahead.
So, one thought was, I mean, you know, before each of these questions, to just have a slide that kind of has an image that kind of represents each of those things. So, we can kind of say, we're going to ask you a question about these things and, and then kind of dive into it.
In comparisons to other communities, if you know and have done and what they've gone through. I mean, you know, the reality is this, whatever we do, it's, and whatever we do or don't do, this isn't going to change tomorrow, but it might change next year and it might change rapidly over the next ten years. So, just be curious what other towns have done and are doing and how that's working for them.
I mean, in general, I'm, I'm, I think that we, we can't look at, um, the Second Avenue property separate from original town. But, you know, and on one sense too, it seems like that's a huge chunk of land that's just ripe for development, you know, and, and, you know, rather than having an impact of my next-door neighbors going to, you know, raise their house or put an addition on that will affect me. This, this will affect everyone along Second Avenue, but it's also, I mean, I, I don't know. I guess I just see like, whether or not, I mean, maybe we just ask the question to the residents, are there different development standards that should apply to, you know, greenfield development than they should be to additions or add-ons or, you know, whatever the case may be? Or what do you want to see out of that? I mean, what are the, what are the character terms for a new development that we want to see? Is it that we want to have alley access? Are you okay with seeing a bunch of garages across the street, you know, as front-loaded? You know, those are the type of questions too that, you know, should, I mean, I know that the first question is, are we interested in design guidelines? And, and maybe you're not for yourself, but I think most people are for their neighbor or for the Second Avenue property. So, it, it may be two different conversations, you know? Like, in terms of what you want to see or what controls you'd want to have in place. Because right now, you know, people could be driving, you know, into their front garages, you know, right off Second Avenue, which would change the whole character of that street. So, I don't know how we, how we get to that or how we, you know, kind of tee that up as an example for, for people to kind of get their heads around. I think the images are great, you know, if, but that, there's a lot of, like, between roof form and height and there's a lot of images that we would need to kind of walk through, so. Um, and that may be the part two type of discussion. But how are you seeing, I guess, that, getting into that kind of level of detail? Is that this conversation or is it more?
I think it's fair, we could add another question specifically about, you know, the greenfield context. I mean, it's really the difference between showing, you know, the.
It's all the same zoning, so I mean, or it's all, you know, standard zoning.
It's kind of the difference between showing half a block face and then showing a whole row of the same home, basically, across the street.
Right.
With all new development and, you know, how does that feel? So, I think we could maybe just kind of frame it up that way, potentially, and ask a separate question about that. You know, it's, there's a lot of different things going on, for sure, so.
Well, and that's the thing too, is like, chances are that if that comes in as a development, it's probably going to develop all at once. And so, you'll have, you know, a much stronger kind of, uh, similar architecture on those properties than you'll have on what's in original town, which is, you know, eclectic and varies from property to property. And I don't know whether or not people want to try to replicate that kind of variety. I don't know who would come in and develop it in that type of pattern, you know? But that's what they, I mean, that's the expectation. And, and just educating folks that, you know, what you're going to see is much more like a traditional subdivision, because, you know, we'll have one developer probably, you know, it's not going to be sold off. we'll have one developer, probably, you know, it's not going to be sold off, most likely one lot by at a time, to individual folks, so.
Yeah, a couple little minor technicalities, too. As I'm looking at this, I was going back to look at the overall kind of platted Original Town, and page 59 has one, but there's a red outline around some areas, and I don't know that that actually captures all of, you know, Asti Park is excluded, but there are, there's a couple vacant lots, kind of in that far right, upper right corner, that potentially could be redeveloped.
Up here.
Yeah, north of that, those are vacant.
Sung, was that the boundary from the comp plan? I'm trying to remember where that-
Where that red line came from?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's interesting.
It's just a, just a, kind of a whatever. And then also, one other slide, the town boundary was pretty outdated in your, one of your maps.
This actually, I'm thinking, came from the zoning map, which maybe is just outdated. This little clip shot.
I'll look.
With the red line?
Yeah, no, that's a really good point.
Okay. And then just make sure maybe you have the latest shape file for the town boundary, I think it was earlier in the presentation.
Okay.
It was pretty old.
Desired circulation, or we just go around the outside of everything?
And then I guess this excludes, this red line excludes Rogers, now that I'm looking at it, too. Or no, you're, yeah, I don't know.
No, we just called it out, so, yeah, we get to that later.
You get to that later, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, as I'm looking at this, you know, if we're going to kind of go into bulk, plain, building envelope, you know, what are those? What do those tools accomplish? Because that's one of your question types, and I know, I think if you said you're going to add a slide, probably be good to explain that. That's not a term, I don't think superiors used before.
Which term was that?
Bulk, plain.
Oh, yeah.
And the reality is, we could spend two hours on the marketplace and two hours on this, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I know, we're asking, I mean, you're asking really great questions. I think we're going to get a lot of really good feedback. I'm excited to hear, to be able to ask these in, more in-depth questions.
And so, I do think that in this section, you hit the mark, in terms of what, the type of questions that we want to ask, and what the residents are looking for. I agree with the, some of the changes that the other commissioners have said, but in terms of this, I really like how it's laid out. I really like that there are some images in there. I even like the "not this, but this" picture, you know, because it does give some context and to what, and some direction to what we're trying to accomplish for this area. So, I kind of, I kind of like it, so I don't have a whole lot to add.
I have, yeah, I've just got a few items at the end. Are we sort of getting close to the end there, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Let's see, so, and this may not fit, but one of the things that came up, I know, in a lot of discussions, was code enforcement in Original Town, and a lot of just, and I don't know whether that fits into this, but we've got non-conforming uses kind of all over the place, and people have complained about that, and there are things that are getting done that you look, you can just look at and see, well, wait a minute, how'd that get approved, right? And we're trying to address that in this as well, but I don't know where that fits as far as-
So, I think Martin and Stephen have tried to provide a bit more context on that, and I think that, you know, reframing that in that it's really more about non-conforming uses than it is about code enforcement.
Yeah, I would agree.
Is that fair, Stephen?
Yeah.
You know, we don't want people to think that this is an issue of enforcement, it's an issue of, there's stuff here that was built over time, and it's not, you know, it's not conforming. Is there anything else you'd say about that, Stephen?
Even the one that was, like, done a year ago, or, I mean, that, I mean, and I don't know if that's code enforcement or non-conforming use, but, I mean, they're just obvious ones that you look at and go, how in the world did that happen?
Yeah.
Or you look in and just see full apartments and, which, I think we're probably going to move in that direction anyway. I mean, likely, at least from what people have been saying, you know, accessory dwelling units seems to make sense, but do we have a way we're going to manage this? Whatever it is we decide we're going to do, because currently, we don't seem to, and then do we, is that part of this process, or is that something else, right? Do people care about that?
I mean, I think that, I think that if that's a, I mean, this is driven by planning commissioners. If planning commission's concerned about, you know, I think it, more of the non-conforming uses is how you need to tee it up. Like, is that something that, I think historically, the board, you know, has seen Original Town as, and in a lot of historic areas, you know, you have properties that cross, or buildings that cross property lines, or that have been built closer to setbacks or over setbacks, or, you know, all over the place.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about things that were done-
Right, so, no, the more specific stuff, I think, is just, you know, policy direction. So, like, or the more current stuff, like, if something's happened, and those are hard to talk about without specifics, you know? And I think every one of those is probably as unique as the, as the next, so. But, I mean, I think it's a, I would think it's probably a separate issue, if you want to bring it up in terms of-
That's all right, no, we can leave it out of that.
No, if you want to bring it up in terms of, you know, we do have these issues that are, you know, like, as much as we, you know, is that part of the eclecticness? Is that part of the character, or is it not? And is it something that needs to be addressed?
Well, I think, I mean, it's probably going to go, I mean, if, if we, if the decision is that ADUs are going to be encouraged, then it's a non-issue, right? Because that's really the biggest issue. I mean, there have been, like I said, there have been people who've left town because they, they wanted to live in the garage, right, and rent out the house, but they tried to do it legally, and they were told, no. The house next door puts an apartment in downstairs, right? So, it's a, it's a question of what's appropriate, right? And so, if we, if we, if the outcome of this results in that being appropriate, then it's a non-issue, and it goes away. If it isn't, if it goes the other way, and accessory dwelling, then it becomes an issue, and we need to have a way to, to address it and deal with it, which we don't seem to now, so.
There are communities that, you know, where Durango's an example, and Chaney actually worked on some revisions to their code related to that, where they had a lot of non-conforming accessory dwelling units. They established regulations for those to encourage them, and then kind of had a, you know, a grace period of two years or something, where people can come in voluntarily and, you know, kind of bring it up to code in terms of getting their, you know, approval. So, there are, you know, ways to get into that.
Yeah, I mean, you get into safety issues, you get into, I mean, there's all kinds of things that just-
But I think the bigger question is, is, you know, is that something that you want to encourage? And if so, then, you know, if that's really what you're getting at, is the, kind of the more of the non-conforming units.
I think it's a combination of fairness and what, and it's fairness, because there are people who want to do things by code, and they're going to come down here and ask the questions, can I put a porch on the front? Get, no, you can't do that, because our code doesn't allow it, and that's, and that's cool, and that's so we don't do anything, but then-
No, I think that-
You know what I mean?
No, I think that-
But there are others who just go do it, right? And just say, oh, the hell with it, I'm just going to build it, and they can come, they can come tell me to take it down or something, right? Which we've done, I know there've been a couple of them, I know at least one instance where that's, where that's happened, right, so.
So, in my opinion, I'd like to not see us go there. I'd like for us to stay more focused on what we're trying to accomplish here, and then, on down the road, look at that, or have that as a separate issue. I think that's, sometimes that's what happens, is we get to spiraling into all of these things. We create this, this tornado, and the next thing you know, everything is sucked into what we're trying to accomplish, and it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with what the purpose of this presentation is.
They're, they're related but separate. I mean, I see Commissioner McCool's point, so if we, if we do this study and we find that, you know, ADUs aren't supported because, you know, it's going to add a certain amount of density to, you know, Original Town, that, you know, will have a negative impact or something, then maybe the product of this is that because of that, we should enforce or do, do some better enforcement upon the ones that are non-conforming, or the ones that haven't been established legally or something.
It's probably a result of the outcome of this, which would, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And I see that as well. However, I don't want us to lose focus on what we're doing here, so.
No, I get that point, too.
That's just the other point.
Right, no, I get it. So, I think it's something to kind of keep in your back pocket and circle back to once we have some more information, but.
I didn't see a lot around traffic flow. Are we, not, I mean, that was one of the big things for this whole northwest area, is just how traffic moves, and if the marketplace grows, and we add 200 people here, what happens? Or Second Avenue comes in, how do we?
That's part of our Part B that we'd come back to later in the summer, so particularly with the marketplace, as we kind of learn more about what people like or don't like about the scenarios, we can work with Alex to kind of model those. I think also what we learn in terms of Original Town, you know, it's not, the density isn't going to change dramatically, but, you know, the ADU, you know, those are all things we could talk about. So, we can bring back more information on that, I think, when we kind of move forward with, you know.
And I'm less concerned about the ADUs, but more so, I mean, you know, what people, what's going to happen with the Second Avenue property, and which way do things come through? And if we suggest that, that we want to add 750 more people to the marketplace, or 250 more people to the marketplace, what, what's that going to look like?
Yeah.
And how are we going to move people in and out? And then also, just the movement of people in and out of the marketplace going forward, because it's a contentious situation, coming across a bridge and people coming into the marketplace, and, you know, that, that's sort of been on my radars. How do we make it comfortable for people to come, to come in, hit the marketplace, sit downtown, have it flow nicely where people aren't having to, you know, push their way in, or wanting to push their way in to get ahead, because the line's so long, and it's backed up down McCaslin to Lewisville, and you don't want to wait three lights to, you know, to get to Costco, right? So, those, but those are, I mean, that's one of the things that's on my mind with, for this area, and making sure we create a comfortable place for people to come in and get in and get out.
And I think, I mean, you saw that emphasis in the scenarios for the marketplace on circulation and access.
Yeah, so that circulation and flow.
And that's a lot of what Chaney was sort of trying to wrestle with, is how do we, you know, prevent those kind of cut-through traffic on the way to, you know, back way to Boulder, and, you know, just sort of trying to create more of a destination so that it functions more efficiently. But we will do, you know, we have that kind of built in to kind of go back and do some of that modeling, but we wanted to get some initial feedback on the different concepts before we, before we kind of put the time into that, so.
Okay. And then the last thing that I had is the, we have this issue with, with RM zoning, and this came up with, and this came up with the Fourth Avenue properties, when they came forward and wanted to do some things, and were unable to, because they were trying to put three or, what is it, six units or on, on the acre there, right? And what they were presenting was much nicer, but trying, trying to apply our code to such a small multifamily parcel created a problem. And that does feel like this is part of that, because I'm, I think we're going to have small RM-zoned parcels that could end up getting sold, and people are going to want to do something with them, and, I mean, I'd be, I mean, I'm just interested in making sure that we can do that in a, in a nice way. And a nice way was presented, but we couldn't, because the code didn't allow it.
No, it's a good point.
So, we had to create something narrower and smaller, and, you know what I mean?
The whole massing analysis is really tricky. I mean, I think that where we can, we should try to point out, like, I think what Bob's talking about is, you know, we have a caveat in our code, or the requirement in our code for medium density, anything above a duplex actually has to have a 10-foot side setback. So, instead of a five-foot, and that, and what's the result of that? So, if we actually went through that kind of scenario, is that, you know, that, you know, you're going to go up if you can't go out, and is that a, is that a result that we really want to encourage?
Right.
When the impact on the massing and, you know, separation and whatever, it could be the same. Like, if it's a single-family home and it's built to 32 feet, it has the same massing impact as a duplex. So, I think that's where some things just seem nonsensical. I mean, it's kind of discouraging in terms of, well, we may not get a duplex out here because they have a greater setback, but we may just get a taller duplex, too, so. I think that's, those are important things to look at as much as we can.
Yeah. How's the last thing I had? I'll say this was awesome. Thank you for doing this. I was very comfortable with it.
We appreciate it.
It looks, looks really, really good.
Helpful to kind of bounce the ideas off of you guys, and this was all really great feedback, so.
Good.
Thank you.
And thanks for taking the time to make an extra meeting to do this.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. And Stephen, you guys, too.
Appreciate your time.
And everybody for coming to one more meeting, please. Yeah, I had, yeah, okay. Okay, I think that's it for that, then. Our next agenda, and it was just whether you had staff announcements, or?
Uh, I don't think that there'll be a meeting at the first of the month. I think we'll have a development review meeting for the second meeting in June, if everything goes as scheduled, but I'll follow up, you know, the week before, and let you guys know for sure, but that's as things are tracking right now, so.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't know. Do you have any announcement? That's it.
I assume you'll work with Clarion to take all these comments and just review them, and make sure we got them into place, and it'll be awesome.
No, they're, they're own. I just, I just provide all sorts of off-the-wall ideas. That's my job.